Well, let's go ahead and get this meeting called to order. Welcome, everybody. It's the Monroe County Work Session Meeting for the month of August. It's 5:31 PM. We're called to order. Looking down here at my computer, it says it's 91 degrees, but it feels like about 191 degrees. It is extremely hot out there, and we're going to be dealing with this heat for the next few days. So, everybody be careful outside. We will do our roll call vote of all council members present here before we get started. So, as I call your name, please unmute your phone and indicate by voice that you are present. Mr. Deckard.
Here.
Ms. Hawke.
Here.
Mr. Iverson.
Here.
Mr. McKim.
Here.
Ms. Munson.
Here.
And Ms. Wiltz.
Here.
Okay. We are all here, so we'll move forward with the next item on our agenda, and that is adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes to make to our agenda this evening? This agenda is posted on Monroe County Government website, so that's what we'll be working off this evening. If anyone does not have a copy of that, you can locate it on our website. Do we have any changes, modifications to the agenda that are proposed? Does not appear so. So, we will entertain a motion.
If we approve the agenda.
Second. Motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the agenda? Is there any public comment on the motion to approve? Seeing none, Ms. Miller will have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke. Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Spoonmore.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
All right, our agenda for the evening has been adopted. We'll move on now to item three, which is department updates. Who would like to go first for departments that are joining us? Let's see here. Do we have Ms. Gregory? Yes, from our auditor's office, welcome. Beginning a revenue report, I'm sure.
Good evening, Council. Yes, I provided a revenue report. It should be in your email. With regard to that, I recently spoke with Kim Shell, and she had a really nice idea to combine the financial reports you've been receiving. So, I would include the additional appropriation report in the revenue report, just, you know, for ease, so you don't have to look at multiple things every month with that. So, you'll be seeing a new template, I'm hoping, next month, and that will be included. So, as always, I'll welcome any suggestions or changes that you'll see with that. Also, from the auditor's office, we've been working with Kim Shell on the budget. I just finished entering the miscellaneous revenue estimates. I have a meeting on Thursday with Kim, Megan, and Auditor Smith, and we will be discussing that miscellaneous revenue, looking at four Bs, and working on entering the rest of the estimated budget. So, I anticipate having an update for you either Friday or early next week. So, you'll have a bit more information then. Also, as you know, the SBOA has contracted out the annual audits. So, we are working with RSM. They are conducting the audit this year, beginning to work through now. So, it's the calm before the storm, if you will, at this point. So, I'm sure they'll be requesting more detailed information, but for now, they have everything they have requested to date. FEMA, unfortunately, I don't have any news. They're still reviewing our submissions. But I hope to have more information shortly on that. We will have a few more reimbursement requests, but we're really close to a project closeout for that. So, I'm just kind of waiting for them to get back to me to make sure we are on the same page as far as totals and so forth and approvals. And then finally, FSG is working on our revenue loss calculation and sustainability calculation analysis. They have everything they need for the revenue and cost-loss calculation, and I anticipate having that very soon, which is great, because we have a report due August 31. So, anyhow, that's all I have for you tonight. I appreciate you having me, and of course, as always, welcome any questions.
Great, thank Ms. Gregory for the update. We'll see if there's any questions for you now. Have any council members who have questions or comments on the report that we just received from Ms. Gregory, our county financial director? Okay, it doesn't appear so. I appreciate the working with Michelle and the continuous improvement to the processes. I think that will be great. Thanks for sharing that. And I know Michelle will also have some additional details to share with us this evening regarding the budget. So, it's that time of year, and we will be in the thick of those budget discussions here soon. So, thank you very much, Ms. Gregory, and we look forward to talking to you next time, okay?
Great, thank you, Council.
All right, and next up for department updates, I believe, is our Commissioner's office. And I see Commissioner Thomas has joined us. Welcome, Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you so much. I'm joining you from beautiful Lake Huron. It's just slightly cooler here. So, I just want to present the 144s to the Council on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. Pursuant to IC 36-2-5-4B, the Board of Commissioners recommends that the Council implement the recommendations as outlined in the Wagner, Irwin, and Shealy Job Classification and Compensation Study, using one of the three phases and options for implementation as outlined in the report. We, of course, believe our employees are the best out there, and we want to ensure that they receive the compensation that they deserve. And that's all I have for you.
Eric, you're muted.
Yeah. Sorry about that. So, we'll have another item later with our commissioners, where they'll be rejoining us for some important discussions that we're having. But let's first see if there's any questions or comments on the update we just received from Commissioner Thomas. Yes, Mr. McKim, it looks like Ms. Hawke as well.
I always forget whether we have to take any action to accept the report or if it's just enough that it appears in our minutes that it's been delivered.
That was my understanding, that it was just received and delivered to us. Ms. Michelle or Rice, I don't know.
Yes, I think that's right. I think it just has to be received, and it's in the minutes that you have accepted it or received it. I don't think a vote's required.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hawke?
Yes, sort of along those lines. We've received it, and we'll take it under full consideration, depending upon revenue as we get that information. That's what I believe the response is, at least from this council member.
And there'll be a very pertinent discussion coming up next on this matter. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Appreciate that information, and we look forward to talking to you here in a bit. Do we have any other departments who have updates for the council? It looks like our health administrator, Annie Cottle, has joined us. Yes, welcome.
Thank you very much. I won't take up a lot of your time this evening, but wanted to give you a little bit of an update. As I think all of you are aware right now, in terms of an advisory and looking at the state map, we've been in yellow now a few weeks, and we are going to remain there another week. So, there's some good and bad in that. The bad news is our numbers are high, and we're continuing to see cases and people with infection and transmission in our community is high. Right now, we're around 30 new cases a day on average. The good news is that people are testing, and they seem to be following the guidance. So, people are in school, and they're getting guidance there if they need it. And so, people are seeking out testing. Now, that's almost déjà vu, because if you remember last summer and fall when demand was high, even with lots and lots of testing sites, it was difficult to get testing. So, this summer, as things kind of wound down, and for various reasons, a lot of the sites closed. There are still hundreds of testing sites across the state, but with the higher demand for testing, it is getting harder to get testing. We are making plans to reopen our community site on Morton Street. We have a couple more hurdles to jump over to get that reset and open, but that is in progress. We have also requested a mobile unit from the state, and so, we are hoping that we can get a day or two or a couple of days of testing available through that in the meantime to help alleviate some of the demand. So, I just wanted to let you know that we're not oblivious to this. We're working through it. It does take a little bit of time, but we are glad that people are getting tested that need to be. And certainly, the recent change for people who are vaccinated and close contacts needing to test changed the dynamics of all of this as well. Our vaccination rate continues to slowly creep up. You know, we started off really well, and like most places, it's kind of tapered off. We've continued to increase our vaccination rates, but not as high and as big of a change on a daily basis. But we are at 58.2% of our eligible population is fully vaccinated. But I'm going to give a shout out to whoever lives in ZIP Code 47401, because you have over 70% vaccination rate. So, shout out to all of you. We're very, very happy for you. You are what's kind of driving that. Now, we have others who are in the 60s, 50s percent, but very, very proud of that ZIP Code for that high amount of vaccination. We are talking about vaccine. We've been doing our Moderna Mondays on Miller Drive, and with the addition of the third dose for those who are severely immunocompromised, we will be looking to increase some of those hours and availability. But also, in September, we started our school clinics where we will be doing flu vaccines and COVID-19 vaccines. So, for students who are 12 and over and eligible for COVID vaccine, consents will go home, as they always do. There's a process with the school. So, if you have students in the schools, you should be in the near future receiving information about that, consents, and our nurses will be in the schools throughout September and October. Of course, with COVID-19, they'll have to go back and do second doses. So, it's a long process, but we will be doing that and hopefully increasing our vaccination rate for that 12 to 19 age group. So, you know, lots happened this week. Pfizer just received full approval for their vaccine, and it has a new official name. And Comer, oh, I can't, Comer, no, okay, I can't read my writing. But they have a new name for it, and they merged several words, apparently, to get it. So, if one of you have seen it and you have it handy, I'll let you share that. But that has full approval. We do recommend, they recommended a third dose for people with moderately to severely immunocompromised individuals, and there's a specific list of people who fall into that category. And that additional dose is because with their compromised immune systems, we are seeing people who have not built up that initial response as we would expect. So, the intent is this will give them that additional coverage and vaccination. So far, I know there's lots of talk about boosters. Boosters have not been approved yet. So, put that on hold. That's being planned. It's being looked at, talked about. We expect that that will come later in September. But for now, those booster shots that people are talking about are not yet approved. That's it.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Cottle. Looks like we've got some council members who have questions or comments for you. I saw Ms. Wiltz's hand first, and then Mr. Iverson.
Thank you, Ms. Cottle, for all of that great information, and yay for 47401. I would like to know if you have, I just don't know even what the latest is on vaccination availability for the under 12-year-old set. Is there a light at the end of the tunnel for that?
Yeah, it's not anticipated to probably come until the end of the year, the beginning of the new year. And that's really all that we know.
Same timeframe, okay. All right, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Iverson?
Penny, thank you also for everything that you're doing. There have been a lot of anecdotal reports that emergency departments are very full, not just in Bloomington, but in contiguous areas. Can you talk a little bit about hospitalization rates and what the community can do to keep out of the emergency department?
Well, certainly, the emergency rooms, all of our hospitals, is we've been kind of reporting for the past few weeks, and Brian Shatney on our press conferences always reports. And what the region is doing, what we're kind of seeing here between Monroe Hospital and IU Health, certainly, we are seeing increases in cases, increases in hospitalizations in addition to their normal workload. And as we come into fall, there are also other illnesses that kind of, you know, rise up during the fall. And so, we are seeing hospitals be extremely busy. And emergency departments are never the place to go for regular care, right? They are for people who really have urgent needs, life-threatening needs, those kinds of things. So, we encourage people first to try to find providers, those kinds of preemptive things so that you can handle that. But we know that there are lots of people who do not have healthcare, and they don't have anywhere else to go but the emergency room. But if you can, one, you know, in terms of my family, for example, and somebody with health insurance is, don't wait until the weekend or late at night. If you feel like you need, you're having issues, please call your provider early or in the day. Don't wait until it's midnight, and now you have no choice but to go to the ER. I'm not sure that that's a good answer for you, but I think sometimes we just have to, we don't want to go, right? We think we can tough it out, whatever it is, and then we end up having no choice but to go to the emergency room, which overloads them. It overloads your pocketbook, because the ER costs more when you go there than it would have if you had went to another provider or Minute Clinic. Certainly, testing, we would encourage you to avoid testing in the emergency room unless directed to go there by a provider.
Great, thank you so much. Can I do a follow-up question?
Yeah.
Do we have local numbers on juvenile cases of COVID-19?
I will tell you that they're going up. I don't have that in front of me. But if you watch that dashboard, you can see just even the number of tests for our youth are going up, and we are certainly seeing increased in numbers from the very, very young all the way to the very old. So, we are seeing infection in all ages, but certainly where, you know, again, a year ago, we weren't seeing a lot of young children. Now, we are.
That's very sobering. Yeah, time to get vaccinated, time to wear a mask. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any, yeah, Ms. Wiltz?
I was wondering if you could speak to the at-home tests that people are able to get at local stores, and the efficacy or when and when to use those?
Sure. So, the rapid antigen testing like the Bionex now, they're very good tests. The question that comes to mind when you are getting something over the counter like that is how well you perform the test. So, are you following the directions very well, and are you really getting that good sample that you need to get? So, there is some concern, your schools probably shouldn't be taking at-home tests for, you know, as a result that they're going to take back, but they are certainly a tool that you have and an opportunity right now while testing is at a premium, can be a good thing for you to do. I would just say, please, take your time, read the instructions, follow them explicitly, and you should have a very good result.
Thank you.
Very good. Do we have any other questions or comments from Ms. Cottle? The update? Okay, well, thank you so much for joining us tonight, Ms. Cottle. All very important information, and we look forward to keeping in touch, okay? Do we have any further department updates for council this evening? I thought I saw our surveyor, yes, okay, Tron Inright Randolph, Monroe County Surveyor, is joining us for an update.
Yes, hi. Am I being able to be heard?
You're good, yeah, welcome.
Great, thank you. Sorry about kind of coming to the council last minute at the work session to do an update. This all kind of goes in line as far as, I think, I'm focused on how it impacts the budget moving forward. At the very end, I do have a few comments that might relate to the next agenda item, so I will ask the council's guidance if you want me to go ahead and summarize those at the very end in a few moments, or if it's more appropriate for me to stick around for the next agenda item and wait for a public comment. But these all kind of relate, so I'll just kind of run through it and then see what the council's direction is at that. So, effectively, when I started the leadership role in 2016, I was able to secure a professional surveyor to come into the office as chief deputy. Throughout that time, I created a job position built around that professional surveyor so we could pay them more adequately, because the chief deputy was tethered to the elected surveyor's position. That has gone away with the year after I served 12 years in that position, but I do like that the council did remove that barrier. So, moving forward, we were able to get a complimentary pay, sorry, complimentary to what a professional surveyor would make in the private sector. But we started off at the low end. We had WIS review it. They came back. I moved forward with wanting to start at $75,000 mark, but we started at the low end. And currently, the full-time position with a three-year bump is around the $62,000. With that said, and when our private surveyor left the county and started their own practice, it's been very challenging to get another professional surveyor here at the county. There's been an article released with, let me bring up, I was going to drop the link to the article in the chat, it's from a point of beginning, it's a 2021 Salary and Benefits Study for Land Surveyors. The average pay is now $100,000, you know? And so, I was hoping $74,000 would make it, but I would even be somewhat not surprised if $80,000 wouldn't even cut it to actually bring a professional surveyor into this office. I have had somewhat of an uptick with my corner fund, so I do plan in 2022 to come to council and address this discussion and try to offset the financial impact the county general may take with my corner fund to get it to more of an equal pay of what professional surveyors make in the private sector. So, with all of that said, that backstory that brings me to more today. So, not being able to hire that position out and setting new standards since I've taken the leadership role, I want to continue to meet those standards. So, I will be reaching out to local surveyors for professional services agreement. I had completed the form that was requested for anticipation of additional appropriate appropriation for this year, and the agreement has just been vetted from legal. We're sending the surveyors the revised agreement, so everything should be in order as far as how the agreements look. Ultimately, we'll need to take that to the commissioners to get the final approval there, but I will be coming to council to do additional appropriation out of the corner fund. I indicated potentially $70,000 of my corner fund, but with the quotes coming in a bit lower, that may not be the final dollar amount, but that was a good earmark placeholder, if you will. So, my goal today is to alert you that I will be coming for professional service agreement appropriation out of the corner fund to move forward, to continue to meet the standards that I have set. Currently, we're still operating, but we're not licensed and never have been. So, we've been doing a preservation of section corner monuments and establishing control on them, but it's not certified. So, unfortunately, we had to walk back a few standards that we were able to implement. I do have a bit more. I see Cheryl has her hand up, and I could pause right now to entertain a question or two.
Yeah. If there's anything related to compensation that you were wanting to discuss, I would just request that we hold off until the next item for that. Ms. Munson, did you have?
That is exactly what I was going to recommend, because we have Ms. Collins and Ms. Rooker from WIS ready to give us a presentation, and we do need to hear from them. And this discussion for Mr. Inright Randolph could come at a different time.
Absolutely. Well, this is, the backstory was meant to give you some understanding why I'm coming for the additional appropriation. I'm not discussing anything that is in line with what pay salaries are going to be set or anything. I do have additional comments for the study, and I can hold those for afterwards, absolutely. I just want to be very thorough and transparent of why I'm here, why I'm seeking the additional appropriation, and how this allows me to meet the same standards that I was able to set, why we were able to bring in a professional surveyor in this office for the three and a half years. We were fortunate enough to have one, so.
Thank you.
That's it. Is there any other questions?
Yeah, let's see if there's any questions or comments from council. And who's the, I forget the liaison to the surveyor's office?
Mr. McKim, and I briefly talked to him, but just with everything that's going on now, I just don't want to catch anyone off guard when I come back for additional appropriation.
Yeah, got it, got it. And I would, yeah, I think that, you know, continue to have those discussions with Mr. McKim, and I know we've got a lot of departments and offices are talking to council members right now and their liaisons about different various budget requests and things that are coming up. So, that's all very helpful to get that information and kind of work through the liaisons, I think is really kind of helps make that an efficient process as well, too. Okay, well, if there's no questions or comments, yeah, please do stick around, Mr. Inright Randolph, for the next agenda item with WIS, and we'll get their report. And if you have additional comments to make, we will be taking some comment on that as well, too.
Great.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any further department updates for council this evening? Okay, and I apologize profusely, council. I totally spaced a promise that I had made earlier in the week to our Women's Commission that I would provide an opportunity for them to give us an update on some important developments that are going on there with their organization. And so, I would And so I would just ask that we could slot them in right now. I know we voted on the agenda and I. I just totally spaced that. I meant to make that change, but if there's no objections, I would like to. Make a little bit of time here for representatives of our Monroe County Women's Commission. We're here to give us a very important update. So if that's okay, we will add them in now and Mem Northcut Bomber. With the Women's Commission will be giving us a presentation here. And I'm sorry, you are muted.
I think I would know better. Thank you. Welcome. My name's, um, thank you for the kind welcome. My name is Mem Northcut Bomber and I'm a commissioner with the Women's Commission. I just have a couple of quick announcements of things we're doing that we wanted to make you aware of and after I. Share them, I will put the flyer link in the chat so you can see more information in written form, too. But the Women's Commission, the Monroe County Women's Commission is celebrating our. I think 100th anniversary. The date I have says 90 years, but I think it makes more sense that we're celebrating 100. And what we do is we help out businesses and individuals in the county to work toward gender equality. So one of the things we're doing is a girls' coding camp which starts September 10th and there's three sites around the county, the Mill, Edgewood Junior High and Lincoln Street Boys and Girls Clubs. And we're still enrolling. We still have some slots to enroll some some students. So I will put if if you know someone who's interested or if you want more information to share a flyer. I will post information about the person you can contact who's Nichelle Whitney. I'll post that in the chat. And then the other thing we're doing is to celebrate our anniversary and to celebrate Women's Equality Day. We're doing a Facebook Live chat this Saturday at 3:00 PM. And we have a flyer where you can, it tells about women's. About different women's equality events historically, but also in our county and has information for how you can connect with us there as well. So those were the two announcements I had and I will, thanks for giving me time and I'll post the information in the chat here in a moment.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for the update and we'll just check here also briefly to see if there's any council members, if that's okay. See if we have any questions or remarks for you. I know the the coding camp has been a terrific success in the past and is that still affiliated with Ivy Tech in any way?
Yes.
Okay, great. I know a lot of kids have had some really positive experiences with that and have talked to parents who have really appreciated that opportunity for their daughters. Any other questions or comments? On the update we just received from our Women's Commission? Yes, Mr. Iverson?
Because I just really wanted to extend my invitation for those of you to check the link that Mem's going to be sharing. And then also to plug, there are still openings on this commission. This is a very active commission. A lot of really important work in our community. So talk to those you know. I think there's still two remaining slots if I'm not mistaken.
Yep. Thank you, Peter.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Iverson. Any further questions or comments? All right. Well, seeing none. Thanks again, Ms. Bommer, for joining us and we look forward to keeping in touch. Okay. And next on our agenda. Is the Wagner Erwin Shealy Report.
Counsel, I moved to open for discussion and received the job description classification analysis final report by Wagner Erwin and Shealy.
Second.
Okay, and Wagner Erwin Shealy, AKA WIS. We have WIS representatives Allison Collins and Addie Rooker here joining us this evening to give us their information. Now, this report was. Previously provided to PAC. A few weeks ago, we received that, all of that. That was a very comprehensive. Robust discussion, I thought, very helpful. That has been archived for anyone interested in the public or. In county government employees. That meeting is archived on CATS's website. I think it's very. Good information. So if you have about an hour and a half to sit and watch that discussion, it's well worth your time. But we'll get another kind of more condensed version here this evening for the full council. And then we'll have an opportunity for some discussion afterwards. So I know our WIS representatives are here and feel free to take it away whenever you're ready.
Here we go. There we go. We were waiting to be allowed to start our video. Sorry about that. Good evening. Again, my name is Addie Rooker and this is Allison Collins. Thanks for having us this evening. And as Eric mentioned, we have gone through this material once before. We have enough material to last probably about two, two and a half hours. So we are going to try to condense as much as possible. Plan to hit the highlights of the summary report. Allison is going to walk you through some of the compensation analysis and the compensation grids. And then if we have time and the council wants us to go through the responses to the department head questions, concerns, we will do that if time allows. So we have, we do are prepared to. Go through those responses if you would like for us to do that tonight. So starting with just highlights of the report. We were asked to conduct a job classification and compensation study for the county. Project objectives included meeting with department heads, having a meeting with each individual department head via Zoom. Along with the personnel administrator and the council administrator, we conducted 29 individual Zoom meetings. In those and part of that was collecting job information, also collected through job descriptions, job questionnaires. And there was a very extensive process of collecting job information that we'll touch on a little bit later. Second objective of the project was to classify and factor all the positions using the factor evaluation system. Collect external salary data, conduct an external salary analysis, conduct a Fair Labor Standards Act analysis, FLSA. Designating all the positions as excluded, exempt, or non-exempt, making sure they're compliant with the federal and state wage and hour laws. And then, and then the final objective was to prepare updated compensation grids that reflect the external salary data ranges. And just as a, as a reminder, referencing Indiana Code 36-2-5-3. The council has, does have the sole authority to prepare job descriptions, classify, describe those jobs and adopt schedules of compensation. And hire can hire assistants in in describing those and that's what they have done as part of this project. The council's job classification system was developed using the factor valuation system. This system was developed by the Department of Labor for public sector employers. It's not proprietary to our firm or any other firm and it's used throughout the state of Indiana by school systems, cities, counties, towns. Most, most counties that have a job classification system, you'll find that they use the factor valuation system. The FES is different in the fact that it organizes positions by job category. So you're only comparing like jobs to each other. So you're not comparing deputies in the reporter's office to truck drivers. They're in a completely different job category. And then there are guide charts for each category that assign points to positions for evaluation. In the FES system, the job descriptions are the foundation of the system. We have stressed the importance of the job descriptions from the beginning of this project. In fact, this has been a very time-consuming project, part of the project. The elements or factors in each job description include job requirements, skills and knowledge, difficulty of work. Responsibility, personal work relationships, physical effort and working conditions or work environment. And not only are the job descriptions useful for the job classification compensation system. They're also benefit for the county to use for identifying essential functions under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Establishing and documenting job requirements for recruiting and retaining employees. Establishing and documenting standards for training, promotion, other conditions of employment. Making sure we're compliant with various government regulations like the family medical leave, the Fair Labor Standards Act and OSHA. And then establishing a set of factors that not only can allow department heads to communicate with their employees what's expected of the job, but also to evaluate job performance. Each of the Monroe County positions were assigned to a job category. And then again, like I mentioned, are only compared to other positions in that job category. We have the the job category definitions and sample job titles. Those are on pages three through five of the report. I'm just going to give you the the categories and won't go into the the detail of the definitions today. The categories include the comment, computer, office machine, operation technician. Labor trades and crafts, the LTCs. Pats, professional administrative technological. We have two types of polls or protective occupations law enforcement. Those are civilian poll and merit poll. We have execs, which are the executives and SOs, which are special occupations. After all, the job descriptions were written and each job description was evaluated and factored by a factoring team. The FES guide charts are designed to give evaluators a quantitative value for determining the relative worth of jobs to each other. The guide chart factors for the LTC, comment, PAT, civilian poll and merit poll. Include job requirements, difficulty of work, responsibility, personal work relationships and the work environment. And all of those are assigned points that are included in total for a total factor point score. The guide chart factors for executive positions are slightly different. They include skills, knowledge and skills, impact. Complexity and difficulty and relationships. So each factor has point value ranges and then the points are combined for each factor to come up with the position's total factor points. And the, and the point totals do differ from job category as the guide charts are not the same for each category. So 300 points in the LTC job category is not the same as 300 points in the PAT category and so forth. Jobs that are very close in total points are then viewed as being in a classification level. That ensures all jobs within that cluster have the same base pay or wage. The Monroe County jobs have been classified into levels within the various job categories. Just a brief, kind of go quickly through the history of Monroe County Job Classification System. Won't go into all the detail, but the system was originally in 1991. Our firm installed the job classification and compensation system, the original, the original project. That included preparing job descriptions, classifying jobs under the factor evaluation system. Conducting an internal analysis and conducting an external salary analysis. So the county has been utilizing the factor evaluation system since 1991. Since that time, the county council has been managing the job classification compensation system. And then as requested, our firm has assisted in maintaining the system just on an as needed, as requested basis. Providing consulting services, reviewing classifications, writing new job descriptions, assisting in the factoring and updating job descriptions. We've done a couple of updates in 2006. We did a complete update with those same steps as the original process. And in 2015 as well, we, in 2015, we just did a kind of an overview. We did not do a comprehensive review or rewrite of all the job descriptions, but we did conduct this external salary analysis. In both the 2006 and the 2015 project. Our firm had recommended a job classification and compensation maintenance plan be instituted and complied with. However, over the time, both the basic rules and procedures of those maintenance plans were selectively and haphazardly followed. That brings us to the 2020 study where again, our firm was engaged by the county to update the job descriptions, conduct an FLSA review. Conduct the analysis of the job classification and compensation system and conduct an external markets survey. In general, our findings indicate empty classification levels within the system, job title inconsistencies. And instances of positions being classified incorrectly, both with the job classification and FLSA classification. Now I highlight some of the internal findings. Allison will go over some of these as well as they pertain to the. Compensation plans directly. As I mentioned, one of the internal findings was with the job descriptions. This is the foundation of the FES system. We found that there was no official record of job descriptions. When we were starting the update process, there were several different versions of job descriptions floating around. Including job titles and FLSA status that did not match the salary ordinance. And this was a time-consuming project. Department heads and elected officials had two to three opportunities to review the job description, make revisions. And all those revisions have been incorporated into the final job descriptions. So the county does now have the accurate, has accurate and up-to-date job descriptions. The recommendation here for council is to adopt the job descriptions by ordinance as the official job descriptions of Monroe County. And then we have some recommended specific language here that's also included in the report. The job class maintenance. As we mentioned, the the maintenance over time has been selective and haphazardly followed. It was reported that department heads did not like to wait and follow the council's procedures. Changes were often made to descriptions or classifications without going through the process or sometimes even without council's knowledge. We found instances of positions that were classified at different classification levels with no reclassification records or documentation in the county's meeting minutes. We also found instances of job title changes made internally, even some job requirements. Were made to, job requirement changes were also made. Allison has prepared a list of those changes and she'll briefly explain that at the end, but that is included in your packet as well. So it's strongly recommended that the council adopt, implement and strictly enforce a job classification maintenance plan going forward. In our view, the council needs to take ownership of the job classification and compensation system. Not doing so will result in this continuing pattern of conducting new job class studies to correct any classification and compensation. Discrepancies that were brought on by the selective and haphazard job class maintenance. We have provided a job class maintenance plan and it is a critical tool in preserving the system going forward. Making sure the job class system is up to date and useful over time. Components of the plan, compensation, composition of the committee that's going to oversee the job class compensation system. Occasions of when the job description should be reviewed, a timeline of when the the request should be submitted. Procedures for reclass of a position or reorganization of an office. Procedures for adding a new position and procedures for recruitment and hiring and those are all spelled out in the maintenance plan. As part of the internal findings, we restructured and retitled all of the classification levels for the job categories. And Allison will go into that just a little more detail. As a result of that restructure, it's likely that some jobs will have different classification title, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's a classification level change. On page 11 of the report, we did list out positions that in our view were significant classification changes. And or, and that includes maybe changing job categories. And please note that we are not recommending any pay cuts for positions that were moved and that may result in a downgrade. Another internal finding was regarding the financial positions. Monroe County is uniquely uncommon in comparison to other counties in Indiana in regards to the, they have 13 financial positions across 12 county departments. In most departments, you will find the financial functions reside in the auditor's office with maybe having one. Financial director or financial manager to oversee countywide financial. to oversee countywide financial functions. Um, the number of financial managers has rapidly increased in Monroe County. Um, in 2006, there were five financial positions. In 2021, there are 13. We found one financial position to be classified incorrectly in the job classification. Three financial positions with incorrect FLSA classifications. And then just an overall inconsistency, inconsistency in the use of financial job titles. Uh, we found that department heads have latched on to the title of financial manager to get positions reclassified with minimal evidence to support the added financial job functions. In addition, we also found a clear duplication of financial functions among the various county departments. Our findings prompted the following questions for council. How much time is really needed to be dedicated to performing financial functions in each department? And number two, could the financial positions be restructured and or consolidated to improve efficiency in countywide financial operations? Um, the council has been deliberating whether to conduct a comprehensive review of these financial positions. Um, and we have provided, um, an offer of services and a, and a, a plan for how to do that if that is, um, the route they decided to take. Allison will talk a little more detail about the compensation grids. Couple more findings here. Um, the stipends for certification pay, um, in the 2021 ordinance, um, there is a stipend, a $5,000 stipend for the emergency management director. Um, now the job, um, in this study, the job qualifications, including certifications, uh, were factored as part of this review process. Um, so therefore additional supplemental stipend is not, no longer necessary. So the recommendation there is to eliminate that supplemental stipend for the emergency management director position. Uh, longevity pay. Um, as most of you know, longevity pay ensures that new hires are not paid an equal amount uh, to senior employees holding the same position. Monroe County does provide a longevity pay program for full-time employees. Um, that schedule of longevity pay is listed on page 14 of the report. Um, the county is essentially providing most employees with double longevity, longevity pay through the longevity pay program and through the compensation grids with longevity step increases. So we found Monroe County to be uniquely generous in providing the two forms of longevity pay um, and rewarding longevity pay up to 49 years of service. Most counties with a longevity pay program cap longevity pay at 30 years of employment. The recommendation, um, for, for this finding, if Monroe County would like to be more comparable to other counties, um, then it's recommended that the longevity pay steps and amounts be adjusted to cap at 30 years of employment. Otherwise, continue the generous longevity, uh, pay program as described. Um, one note here is that monies that are allocated to fund the longevity pay program could be dedicated to employee salaries. Um, as I mentioned, we did a, a restructure to some of the job classifications. So there is a comparison of the current classification structure and the proposed structure for each classification level and the points assigned. Those are on pages 15 and 16 of the report. Um, for the 2021 external salary analysis, um, we conducted the analysis using benchmark positions for each job category. And then the salary data that Allison will review with you represents the pay relationship with light jobs in the external market. The external sources, um, that we used in the salary survey are listed on page 17 of the report. An external salary line was developed for each job category. This salary, salary line is a regression of all good salary data that was collected in the study encompassing hundreds of, of, of position salaries. The analysis methodology reflects the use of the middle 80% of the data um, collected by eliminating the highest 10% and the lowest 10% of those salaries. The special occupations and elected officials salaries for those were direct job matched. Allison will talk about, um, external midpoint in the, in the analysis and that refers to the mean or average pay rate for jobs surveyed in the external market. Our FLSA review, um, was conducted for all county job, job positions. And each position is either designated as exempt, excluded or non-exempt from the federal and state wage in our laws. The report does have definitions for those. Um, we have excluded or primarily, this is a small group of your, um, elected officials, policymaking appointees, personal staff, legal advisors. Exempt employees, um, they, in order to be exempt, must meet one of the duties tests under the Fair Labor Standards Act, um, the professional administrative or executive. And you only have to meet one and they also have to be paid on a salary basis and meet a minimum salary threshold of $35,568. Um, exempt and excluded positions are not eligible or entitled to receive overtime or comp time under the FLSA. All other positions were classified as non-exempt on and are eligible to receive overtime or comp time. The FLSA status is listed on each job description and is included on the salary analysis. Just an overcap of some of the findings, most department heads. Um, some of their department heads reported that they did not fully understand the FLSA definitions and were not sure if their positions were, were classified correctly. Uh, we did find some positions that were, um, incorrectly classified for FLSA status. And on page 19, we've listed those positions and the recommended FLSA status. Any position changing from exempt to excluded doesn't really change how they've been treated. It just, um, identifies the correct, uh, FLSA classifications for proper documentation. And department heads did express that they would like to see the county, um, implement a comp time policy for exempt and excluded positions. Um, while I just mentioned that under the FLSA, exempt and excluded positions are not entitled to or, um, eligible to receive comp time or overtime, but the county may adopt a more generous overtime policy, um, if they choose to do so for those positions. Um, if that's something that the county chooses to move forward with, uh, we would advise that the, that overtime policy for exempt and excluded be significantly different than what the overtime policy is for your non, non-exempt employees, uh, going forward. Um, the main elements of a pay structure include your internal pay equity. This is the relationship among light classified jobs. External pay equity, um, this is what we've provided for you today. Um, the pay relationship with light jobs in the external market. So questions to think about for the council. Where do we want our employees to be paid in relationship to the external market? What do we need to pay to attract and retain, uh, qualified employees? Uh, performance pay, this is pay linked to employee performance. Longevity pay, you're already providing that. And technical, technical pay, this is a supplemental stipend that's linked to a technical specialty for, um, performing duties, um, in addition to the normal job functions. This is not the pay for required certifications of the job. Almost done with a quick summary here of the report. Um, overall, for the, the, the compensation analysis that you will receive, this is, um, to be used as a, as a tool and a guide for council in setting pay going forward. Um, we know that the, the funds, the available funds play a big part in how these move forward, but there are options for u- utilizing the information. Um, with budgetary constraints, we have provided three phase in implementation options um, for setting pay based on the external market. Those are spelled out on page 21. Um, I'll briefly go over those. Option one, fund the pay adjustments to the external market for all county and positions over a two-year period. Funding 50% of pay adjustments in budget year 2022 and the remaining 50% of pay adjustments in budget year 2023. Option two, fund pay adjustments to the external market for all positions over a two or three-year period by capping pay adjustments at a flat dollar amount according to available funding. Option three, establish the county compensation grids at a percentage of the external midpoint salary and fund those pay adjustments at 100%. Um, one of the most important things, and I think you've probably tou- we've touched on already and you probably realize that, um, maintaining the job classification system, um, over time is, is key, uh, to keeping this system up and running. Um, so it's strongly recommended that the council establish and adhere to standardized maintenance procedures and pay policies. It's recommended that the council adopt a salary ordinance that memorializes the county council's job classification and compensation maintenance policies and procedures. Um, and that includes specific language related to the job class system. And we spelled out some of that specific language on page 22 of the report. And now, um, Allison will walk you through the compensation analysis.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Um, hopefully you have printed out the pay plans or if not, you can look at it on your computer just so you can follow along with me. Um, the first one I'm going to look at is the Comet job category. So this one I'm going to take a little more time on just so you understand exactly what you're looking at. Um, so we have it, um, as by like department and then, um, the title, so for that position in that department. The title is what the department heads have recommended or what we have recommended. So those are updated. Um, and then we have the hire date and the current step or level that they are on. Um, so I will say that that, that information was provided to us. Um, and then their 2021 salary, um, their annual work hours that they are currently working, and then the FLSA status. And I will say the FLSA status is what we are recommending for these positions at this time. So if, they have been updated along with the job descriptions. Most people did not change, but some did. So I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Um, next we are looking at the external analysis. So we've got that external midpoint salary that Addie had talked about earlier in the report. And then the external midpoint hourly rate. Um, I do want to say that we have accounted for the differing annual hours worked. Um, so while the hourly rate is consistent within the levels, the external salary will differ based on their annual hours. Um, and then the cost to the external midpoint salary. Um, just want to say that that number is the difference between that external midpoint salary that they're, that we're giving you and a 2021 salary. Um, and then lastly, you're going to see the compensation grid option. Um, so just to give a brief overview, the county utilizes compensation grids that have six steps at the moment. So we've got minimum, one year, the three-year or the midpoint hire, eight-year, 14-year and maximum. Uh, but there wasn't a consistent percentage spread between the minimum and the maximum step. So what we have done, we have prepared, um, compensation grids, how they're already set up. Um, but that proposes seven steps for the employees, um, based off of that external midpoint salary. So the external analysis is a building block for these proposed compensation grids. Um, so we are proposing a minimum, a one-year, the three-year or the midpoint, which is that external midpoint salary, um, eight years, 14 years and then 20 years. Um, so we got rid of the maximum level, um, which the county requested us to do so. Um, and there were only six people in that step anyway. So it really wasn't an incentive for your employees at this time. So we replaced that with 20 years and then also added in 25 years um, with a consistent percentage spread of 26.67% from a minimum to 25 years. Um, the addition of the 20 and 25 years step will provide an additional benefit to the long-term employees. Um, and will just better utilize your compensation grid. Um, so some of the internal findings for Comet. Uh, the Comet job category currently has five classification levels, uh, but there are very few positions classified at levels one and five. Um, so we recommend the restructure of the Comet category into four classification levels, as you can see on the pay plans, um, to accurately reflect the organizational structure of the positions within the category so far. Um, so Comet A is 235 points and below. Comet B is 240 to 340 points. Comet C is 345 to 495 points. And Comet D is 500 points and above. So that's how all of the spreadsheets are set up. There is a total of 154 Comet positions. So four out of 154 Comet positions are at or above the external midpoint. So an easy way to point that out is if a position has a $0 amount in that cost to external midpoint salary. So that's what I'm referring to there. Um, and then the Comet positions lag behind the external market by 8.34%. Um, one position is at or above the grid placement and will come in for a salary adjustment. So again, that's where, um, the position will have a $0 mark on the cost to place on the grid column. If you were to place everyone on the proposed grid, um, the total cost would be $486,131.41 um, with a percent increase of 10.78% above the current 2021 salaries. There are 10 Comet positions that have 20 plus years of service and 35 positions with 14 plus years of service. So I wanted to point that out to show you the benefit of adding the 20 and 25-year level to the compensation grids. All right. Next, we're going to look at the LTC compensation grid. Um, the internal findings for LTC, there are currently five LTC classification levels, um, but there aren't any positions classified in level one. So we recommend to restructure the LTC category into four levels um, to accurately reflect the current organizational structure of the positions. The spreadsheet is set up just like the Comet one, um, with the exception of the current step slash level or years of service. Um, so the Union Highway positions utilize a completely separate grid with, um, a base salary and 13 compensation steps based on years of service up to 45 years. Um, the Union Highway positions were classified and placed on the LTC compensation grid, um, just to ensure pay equity among light classified LTC positions countywide. Um, these positions would benefit financially if placed on the proposed compensation grids, but however, some employees will, will receive no salary adjustment. Um, there are a total of 58 LTC positions. Um, and the positions lag behind the external market by 7.45%. Four out of the 58 positions are at or above the external midpoint. Um, but keep in mind, they all have 20 plus years of, of service. Um, six out of the 58 positions are at or above the grid placement salary. Seven LTC positions have 20 plus years of service and 10 positions have 14 or more years of service. Total cost to place all positions on the grid would be $148,371.07 with an increase of 6.97% above the current 2021 salaries. 34 of the 58 positions have three years or less of service, which is 59% of the total positions. So just wanted to bring that to your attention. Next, we're going to look at the PAT compensation plan. The internal findings there, um, there are currently five classification levels again, um, in the PAT category, but there are only two positions classified in level one. Um, so we recommend to restructure the PAT category into four classification levels to accurately reflect the current organizational structure of the positions. The spreadsheet and the proposed compensation grid is set up just like the Comet one, so it has seven steps. Um, there are 136 PAT positions and there is only one position paid at or above the external midpoint. PAT positions lag behind the market by 9.12%. Ooh, cost to put everyone on the grid is $652,179.61 with a total percent increase of 11.9%. 21 positions have 20 plus years of service and 39 positions have 14 plus years of service. So again, they would really benefit with adding in the 20 and 25-year level on the, our proposed compensation grid. All right. Next, we will look at civilian poll. Um, there are currently seven classification levels, um, for civilian poll, but level one is empty and there's only one position classified at level two. So we recommend to restructure the civilian poll category into five classification levels um, to accurately reflect the current organizational structures of the positions. The spreadsheet is set up just like the Comet one, um, with the exception of the current step slash level or years of service. Um, according to the county's salary ordinance, each correctional officer receives a 48 cent per hour increase in pay for each full year of service, um, for the first 20 years. per hour increase in pay for each full year of service for the first 20 years, which puts them in a completely separate pay grid. All jail or correctional center positions were classified and placed on the proposed civilian poll grid according to their specialized annual work hours. So you will see for that grid, we have an 1820, a 2080, and a 2145, since they do work different annual hours. The jail slash correctional center positions would benefit financially if placed on the proposed grids, but however, some employees will receive no salary adjustment. There are 92 civilian poll positions. Twenty-one positions are at or above the external midpoint, but please keep in mind that 18 of those 21 positions are jail positions. Fifteen positions that are at or above the grid salary, which are all jail positions. Civilian poll positions are lagging behind the market by 5.9%, and the total cost to place everyone on the grid would be $214,475.55, with a 5.43% increase from the 2021 total salaries. And four positions have 20-plus years of service, and 14 positions with 14 or more years of service. All right. And next, we will go to the merit poll. There are currently four classification levels. Level four is an empty class with the captain position being classified as a special occupation, which is our SO job category. So we recommend restructuring the merit poll job category into three classification levels, as you see, to accurately reflect the rank structure of the sheriff's office. Sheriff positions are currently on their own grid, but we have eliminated that and put them on the merit grid. But we only have provided a 40-hour grid, since all merit positions work 202080 hours annually. There are 39 merit poll positions, and the current salaries are in line with the external market. And I will tell you, as a whole council, just like I told PAC members, we applaud you for making that move. Only eight positions are below the external market, with three of those being new hires or at one year. Merit positions only lag behind the market by less than 1%, so that's great. And it'll only be a 2% increase to place everyone on the proposed grid. There are 17 positions at or above the grid salary, so this is evidence, again, that the merit positions are in line with the external market. Moving on to executive. So there are currently two classification levels. Executive positions currently include various attorneys. So we recommend taking out all attorney positions and putting them in their own classification. The executive category now includes just various department heads and their second-in-command, and remains at two classification levels. The proposed compensation grid is set up just like the comment one and the rest of them, with a 35 and 40-hour and seven steps. There are a total of 14 positions, and only four positions have less than 14 or more years of experience. So again, this would be one category that would really benefit from the 20 and 25-year that we're proposing for the grid. Executive positions lag behind the external market just by 1.01%, with three positions just behind the external market midpoint salary. Only two positions are at or above the grid placement. So the total cost to put everyone on the grid would be $60,883.59, with a percent increase of 5.74% from the total 21 salaries. So next, we are going to go to this new proposed classification is the SO attorney. As mentioned before, these positions have been pulled out from the executive category, and there are three levels, with each level having its own criteria. So in your packet, you should have also received the definition of the SO attorney levels, but I will go over those briefly for you. So level A is a licensed attorney and a member of the Indiana bar, and the job functions require a law degree. Experience required is zero to 12 years. Level B is a licensed attorney and member of the Indiana bar with the functions requiring a law degree, but the minimum of years of experience is five years. And then for level C, it's a licensed attorney and member of the Indiana bar with the functions requiring a law degree and a minimum of 10 years' experience. So in order to even be considered in this job category, you have to be an attorney, a member of the bar, and requiring a law degree. We have developed proposed 35 and 40-hour compensation grids with seven steps for these positions as well. There are a total of 33 positions, with 14 of the 33 are at or above external market. The attorney positions lag behind the market by 2.75%. So the total cost to place everyone on the grid would be $102,359.69, with a percent increase of 4.57% from the total 2021 salaries. And five positions have 20-plus years of service, and 10 with 14 or more years of service. Next, we are going to look at the SO positions. So on the spreadsheet, you will first see SO chief deputy positions. So both options that we present to you will give a salary increase for three positions, and three positions will not receive a salary adjustment. Just depends on what option you would go with. The chief deputies compare well with the market, so again, we applaud you for that. But there are two external options shown. So option one is the salary is based off 90% of the Monroe elected official salary, while option two is based off 90% of the external elected official's salary. The chief deputies, with the exception of the sheriff chief deputy, have been removed from the compensation grids as was requested by us. And then next, we go to the SO coroner deputy. These were direct job matches, and the external range is 10% down and 15% up from that external midpoint. And the coroner deputies are right within the external range, which, again, we applaud you for. Lastly, we're looking just at the special occupations positions. So it's set up just like the coroner deputies, they're direct job match, which is the IBD commissioner is the only one above the market range. So the total cost would be $70,071, with a percent increase of 10.28%. Next, we're looking at the SO probation positions. So we have listed all probation officers and their recommended FLSA status, but as noted at the bottom of the spreadsheet, probation officers must be paid according to the minimum salary schedule, which was provided in your packet. So therefore, we did not provide any external information. All right. And lastly, for the pay plans is the elected officials. So this is, again, a direct job match, but the external salary range is comprised of the lowest salary to the highest salary. So I just wanted to let you know that it's not the 10% down and 15% up. It's just from the lowest to the highest salary range. Okay. So to summarize everything I just said, I've also provided you with a cost summary analysis. So the total cost to move everyone to just the external midpoint would be $1,436,648.35, with a 6.33% increase. If you were to move everyone to the grids, the proposed grids that we have given you, it would be $1,706,175.16, with a percent increase of 7.52%. All right. Next, we will move on to the commissioner's salary and benefit survey. So the commissioners requested that we would provide salary information and benefits for the full-time commissioners. It was reported that the Monroe County commissioners, they work a full-time schedule but are being compensated accordingly. So this is what that spreadsheet shows you, and what counties utilize full-time commissioners. So the average external salary is $64,463. And as you can see, the rates vary for employee contribution and county contribution for single and family plans. All counties provide health insurance to commissioners and council members who are full-time. And for interns, half of the counties have employees pay the 3% contribution, and the other half pay it themselves. But Monroe County pays the entire contribution of 14.2%. And lastly, for me, is this spreadsheet, the changes in the Monroe job descriptions. If you look that over, you will see it's mostly title changes. So that was either the department head or elected official wanting a title change, or even we recommended a title change. So I have marked with a little asterisk the ones that we recommend changing, just to better fit the job description itself. But we also included if there was an education change, maybe a certification change requested by the department head, classification changes, if they went from a PAT to a comment, or vice versa, and then an FLSA change as well. Like I said, most people did stay the same, but some were misclassified, so we wanted to make sure that they were accurately classified. And I believe that is it for me.
Eric, do we have time to go into the department head questions and concerns from the August 3 meeting?
That'd be the most important thing.
Yeah. Let's pause and see if there's any questions from council here first, and then we can, I think, let's make that the next segment. Does that work for everybody? Okay. So based on what we've, the information we've received up to this point, let's see if we have any council members who have questions or comments. We did, Michelle in the council office collected a number of questions and concerns from department heads. Those were collated and prepared, and then sent back to Wagner, Urwin, Shealy for their responses, and so we'll hear those here shortly. But yeah, let's start with what we've received at this point. Mr. McKim, did you have a question or a comment?
Yes, thanks. I just wanted to talk about the longevity issue. So you did mention that we are uniquely generous in terms of longevity, but it sounds like really the only recommendation is to cap out longevity increases at 30 years. You're not suggesting that, I mean, are you essentially agreeing that we should keep our current longevity system in addition to the grid system? Or are there other ways in which we should be scaling back longevity?
I think it's a great program you have in place, so we're not recommending that you get rid of it. We wanted to show you how you compare to some other counties. It's unique in the fact that it does go out to 49 years. And if the council were looking for ways to fund employee salaries, this would be one option. You could either freeze or eliminate a longevity pay to use that money to make pay adjustments if you chose to. But we're not recommending that you eliminate the longevity pay program unless you want to use that funds in another way to benefit the employees.
Thank you.
Mr. Iverson?
Yes, thank you for all the work that you've put in. Really appreciate the detail of the report. And I wanted to talk about the selective and haphazard way in which this body has followed previous recommendations from you. Obviously, that language kind of sticks in the craw a little bit. It's nice that there's at least honesty and everything. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the compensation and maintenance plan. And I think one of the questions I had is, how would that fit into the existing structure of our PAC committee? And maybe that's a better question for Mr. Deckard or others on the council, but certainly I'd appreciate your thoughts on how that would fit within the current structure that we have.
Well, that was one of the recommendations in the report is to examine that body and see if that's how you want it to continue, or if you want to make up a different composition of the job class system, that subcommittee. A lot of counties will use just a subcommittee of council, so there's different ways to set that up. So that is one way to look into that. If you're happy with the PAC committee, how you have that structured, then that can be utilized going forward. The maintenance plan is something that we want to customize to fit your needs. So we have provided a draft, and that can be tweaked to fit how you want to move forward in maintaining the system, what will work for you from Monroe County, and how you want to minister that. But we want the council to take ownership and be able to participate in that process.
I guess my question is, does council seem to think, or is there thoughts on whether or not we need an additional layer? Or is what we have sufficient? Just, yeah.
So I can, Ms. Rice may also want to chime in here too, but I think we've got the framework that WIS has given us long ago. And this was going to be one of my questions, too. I appreciate Mr. Iverson asking the question, because that language of selective and haphazardly followed practices is not something I like to be associated with myself. But I think it was mentioned that this had gone back, you know, as far back as 2006, I think, as I recall. And so, in your analysis, were you able to determine, and we'll get back to Mr. Iverson's questions, but I do think, Peter, that we've got that framework in place. We just need to do it, is the thing, and it shouldn't be that difficult. So we just have to get into the routine of doing it. And that's, if we're going to do anything with these recommendations, we absolutely must do that. I mean, there is no reason to go backwards if we're going to do this, spend all the money and time and investment that we've done here with this, and not have a maintenance plan going forward would be just a horrendous outcome. So, but in the analysis that WIS did, were you able to determine kind of when the most egregious selective and haphazard practices occurred? Was that here recently, or was that, you know, 10 years ago? Or were you able to make any of that determination? I'm trying to, I guess I'm trying to assign blame here. I'm kidding.
It's not just recently. It has been ongoing since 2000, after the 2006 study was presented. From, I can tell you, because I've been part of each of these studies, not the original, but from 2006 on, I can tell you, there were drastic inconsistencies from the 2006 to the 2015 classifications. We made mention in that report, in the 2015 report, that we're just, there were classifications that we have no idea how they were made. There were no record of those. And so there were just things that had happened over time, and not all at once, but gradually, with just either the council making decisions and meetings without, you know, looking into those requests, requests not coming to our firm for, you know, a second opinion. You've had a run of two or three HR directors over time, you know, that were trying to maintain it internally themselves. So I think it's just a culmination of all those factors with inconsistent implementation and administration. And I think you're in a good position now with, you have a council administrator. If you utilize that position as council staff, that can be the way to maintain this system going forward for the budget, and ensuring that you have a gatekeeper to make sure that these processes are followed. Vigo County has a similar position, a council administrator, and that person is a bull in a china shop, doesn't let anything go astray. And you have to have tough skin, and the council has to back that position and back the procedures. So it can work, but I think, you know, it has been a process over time of where we've ended up.
Thank you for that insight. I saw Ms. Hawke's hand first, and then Mr. McKim.
Yes. I've been around since we first started the WIS. I just think if PAC would follow the rules and not make exceptions, and not play favorites, we can do this. I mean, because no matter how hard the staff works, they don't get to vote on this. It's the county council that votes on it. So we have to understand the rules. You have to have a PAC that has a strong understanding of what the rules are, and no matter who else is working with us, whether it's, you know, our county attorney or whatever, we need to make sure we know how the rules and follow them. Because that's what we are elected to do, is to represent the people. And we cannot just do what we would like to do because we're friends.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hawke. Mr. McKim?
Yeah, I guess I was, what I was going to say was somewhat similar to Councilor Hawkes. We're going to have to, you know, we all have to be willing to have department heads potentially be mad at us, even those that we like and think do a really good job. They may not agree with us on the classification decision. And even though we think they work really hard and, and do a great job, we still need to, you know, stand up for the, the principles and, and the procedures. And I guess the other thing I would say is that, over at least as long as I've been on the council, there's often been pressure from department heads, from HR, from some elected officials, to kind of do away with using an outside classification consultant. And I think this is, we really need to remember this moment and remember how it important, how important it is to have an outside, an outside view, an outside independent eye at looking at these classification decisions. This is not something that we want to see, that we want to take in-house, even though we might be able to save a few bucks on the consulting contract. But it's very, so let's, let's all remember right now, we need to be committed to having an independent view on classifications.
Thank you, Mr. McKim. Council attorney, or county attorney, Margie Rice?
Yeah, and I want to make sure the council and the public, everybody on this call realizes that this has been a slippery slope for about 16 years. And Margie has, you know, has the most experience. I think she will probably remember when the 2006 study was done, we actually took council members up to Muncie, Indiana. It worked with Wagner, and she, they learned how to factor positions. And, you know, pretty much within the next year after that study, I don't think we aggressively implemented the findings. And Jeff McKim is correct that, over the years, the council has been advised by various staff that they could probably do it themselves, that it would just require a few phone calls to gather information from other counties, and you could make it up. Remember what they said earlier in this meeting is that this is a system adopted by the Department of Labor. I'm going to tell you that you are much better off adopting a system and following a system than making it up on, on your own. And you may, you know, individuals may not love this system. You may not love spending money on a maintenance plan or with consultants. However, it's money that is wisely invested, in my opinion, because you have some certainty. The fairest way to treat employees is to be equitable and to be objective. And so I would encourage you, and again, I want to let you off the hook because this has happened over a period of about 16 years. I don't want any public members, you know, tuning in and thinking that it's this configuration of the council that has been haphazard. This has happened over a period of time, but you guys are going to get the opportunity to build a better system.
Well, let me, yeah, and thanks for that information. Let me take this opportunity now, I think, just to, just to clarify. So we're, we're all on the record here. Are there any council members who are, you know, opposed to having an outside independent expert consultant advise us in this regard, and would rather kind of go it alone and do this ourself? Is there anyone who would rather take that approach? I don't, okay, it doesn't appear so. So I think we're all on the same page.
I don't know, Michelle raised her hand.
I just want to say, we've seen the results of trying to do it ourselves, you know, misclassifications and, you know, that kind of thing. So I see the benefit of the third-party administrator, you know, need for that. And it provides consistency and equity across the board for every department, every classification.
Got it. Very good. Mr. Deckard, and then Ms. Hawke?
Thank you very much. I, I have a question, but first I do want to react a little bit. I, I do want this to work, and I want it to work well, particularly as, as PAC chair. I want, I want something to function well. I'm anxious to hear some of the responses to the questions that we received, because I think that's a big thing that we're, we're still missing here. But I, I also say this with a little bit of heartburn, that we've said that before. In fact, we've been, it looks like we've said that since 1991. I've not been here all that time, but it passed its prologue. It sounds like it's easy to get into this mess again. And if we would go down this direction and figure out what we got to figure out, I think it's an important consideration to look at what does go wrong that prevents things from happening. And maybe it's key personnel doing the right thing at the, the right time. Certainly, the, the council is not in the courthouse all the time managing day-to-day operations, and certainly that's probably not going to change. And I don't think people want all of us in the courthouse sometimes, all the time. So some, something to think about. I guess the question I have for our consultants is, if I am, if I'm, let's say I, I look at something, I'm going to make up a job here. I'm going to say park ranger. If I look at park ranger and I'm like, ah, that looks a little kooky, I'm not sure they've classified that right. And then I go even further, and I say, I'm going to compare park ranger to vending machine mechanic, because I think that they're similar in scope. Tell me, A, why I should feel good about the way it's classified? Maybe you could talk about the factor evaluation system? And then why maybe I shouldn't compare those two roles in the way that I have?
Well, first of all, those, those positions may not even be in the same job category. And so even though a job may have, you know, a couple similarities, or maybe even the same job title, the factor evaluation system is looking at the totality of the job. So looking at all the factors of the job, the job requirements, the work relationships, the supervisory responsibility, the work environment, taking all that into an account, and assigning points based on the guide charts that assign value to those different varying degrees of those factors. We, we have provided, as a response to the, some of these questions, this, this is a system that has been proven over time. And just selecting a random job on the outskirts doesn't necessarily mean that they're completely, completely identical.
And it ties, you're essentially saying it ties into US Department of Labor, Labor Factor Evaluation System, and theoretically, every single job we have in classification will tie into that system in some way.
Yes. Yes, and the points that are assigned aren't points in a grid that we came up with. This is a system that was, and guide charts developed by the Department of Labor. And then they, they're used by factor teams internally to factor. Now, it's proven to be valid by research where you take different factor teams, and if you factor the same group, you may have, Allison's group may factor a little higher. My group may factor a little more conservatively, but the outcome is that the rank structure and the order of those jobs come out to be the same. So I think that, you know, in this round, we had a completely different factor team internally here factoring the jobs. And so the, the factoring, you know, may differ just a little bit from where it did the last time we reviewed the jobs.
So the changes that happened. And by the way, thank you very much for thorough explanations, both in PAC and here. We really appreciate this.
You're welcome.
I think Ms. Hawke was next.
Yes, just that I feel like I need to clear my name here, because I'm the one that's been here all these years. But I think those of you who heard me and have been hearing me over the years, I have absolutely pleaded with us to follow the guidelines and not to try to change our guidelines or make them up as we go, because that's how we get in trouble. So I'm glad we're going to get back, have a starting point, go forward. And that doesn't mean there won't be, time to time, something needs to be changed, but that needs to go through the process and needs to make sure that we're following your guidelines. And if we see a hiccup someplace, we can ask you for additional information.
Yeah, and I can certainly vouch for what Councilmember Hawke just said. One of the reasons, I mean, I've been hearing for years, that, that same sentiment from Councilmember Hawke, and one of the reasons why as president I wanted to appoint Ms. Hawke to PAC, so that we could start having these conversations more frequently within PAC. So thank you for that. That's been very valuable, that insight. Who was next? Mr. Iverson, did you have another question?
No, but I am a little eager to hear the responses.
Yeah, yeah. I've got one, one last question. Well, I guess just a remark regarding the financial positions. As I mentioned in PAC, I think this was one of the, one of the aspects that I was particularly struck by in the recommendations that we have. I think the, the terminology was uniquely uncommon framework here in Monroe County for how we've structured those 13, 14 positions, or whatever the number is. And so I think that is something that we absolutely should be discussing and coming up with the plan for. I don't know what that's going to look like, but I think it's something that we, we have to. That's, that's our duty as council to be having some conversations about that. But I did want to ask WIS, in your, in your analysis, did you see any other counties? I know you mentioned that it was unique to Monroe County, but were there any other counties that had anything similar to what we do here in, in Indiana? Did you see anything like that? Or are we truly the only one that has this type of a structure in place for financial positions?
You are the only one that we've come across.
Got it. And I also wanted to clarify too, that it was mentioned earlier that the council had been deliberating on potential ways to explore how we might want to address this. That's, that's really hasn't been the case. It's been more of, that was in my direction. I had asked our council staff to talk to WIS after we received the report, just to see if we might come up with what possible ways we could explore addressing this. So that has not been discussed or deliberated by the full council. That was really just me, in my capacity as council president, kind of giving direction to our county attorney and our council administrator to work with WIS on that. So just wanted to clarify that real quick. But let's get to the questions that department heads, and feel free to move in to segment two here of our discussion.
Okay. Try to get through these as quickly as possible, and stop me if you need to. One, I've grouped the questions into some general questions and then some department-specific questions to try to get through them a little bit quicker. And there were some similar questions, so that's how I've organized it. Number one, when can we see the job descriptions? All of the final job descriptions were sent to the council administrator on August 20th. So if she doesn't have them, they should be arriving shortly, and included in that packet or in individual folders that will be distributed to all the departments and elected officials. So then they can make copies, distribute those to the employees, get the sign off, and then you can have that official copy for the employee's personnel file. Number two, there was an error in the civilian poll pay grid. Yes, that was correct, and we corrected that error. The civilian poll pay plans were all corrected, and the cost summary was adjusted accordingly. Several departments indicated that hire dates or grid placement was incorrect on the, the pay plans, or maybe a position was missing, or what didn't have the correct salary. All the information that was listed on the pay plans was, information was provided to us. So we do apologize if there wasn't something that was correct, that we were going off on the information we were provided. The cutoff date for the grid placement was June 30th, 2021. So anyone that had a higher date after that, you know, it's kind of a moving target. So we, we had to draw the cutoff at some point so you could see an accurate cost analysis. And following today's meeting, we will be providing the county with an Excel version of those spreadsheets. So any changes that need to be made, higher dates, the council administrator will have the ability to do that and, and keep the council abreast of those new information. Number four, can you explain the point system that was used to set the classifications? I believe I touched on that in the explanation of the, in the report. So I don't feel that we need to go into that one. Again, that was talking about the FES system, the Department of Labor, using the guide charts and assigning points based on the different factors. So that's all spelled out clearly in the report, and I described that as well. Several departments expressed that positions were misclassified as a result of the study. Our firm was hired to conduct an independent review of the county's job classification and compensation system. Our factor teams evaluated the job and not the person that was holding the job. Based on our evaluation and review of the county's existing job class system, we found numerous positions to be misclassified. We understand and anticipate that the department heads are advocates for their employees to receive higher salaries, and that not all department heads and employees will agree with the study results. For this reason, we've provided the council with a job class maintenance plan that describes an orderly process for requesting review of a position or adding new positions. It is recommended that the council adopt the job descriptions, the job classifications, and the maintenance plan before starting another process for allowing department heads to, or employees to make requests to have their job reviewed. We just, the county spent a lot of money having us go through this entire process. We met with department heads. We went through back and forth on job descriptions. Our firm followed up with multiple departments on phone calls, trying to get accurate information, accurate org charts. So we just recommend the council get the pay plans and the classifications and the maintenance plan adopted before moving forward with any re-class reviews. If the PAC process is accepted to review the job description, every time someone resigns, can this process be handled quickly? Would a complete review be necessary every time? The best time to review a job description is when it becomes vacant. While it is a good practice, it may not be necessary to review a job every time that it's vacant, especially when positions are held by multiple incumbents. And this came from a department with positions that have multiple incumbents. So that's, that's not necessary. Now, moving on to the department-specific questions. Over, over our years of experience with the county, we have found that department heads, local officials, employees, they are experts about what's going on across the hall. Many of these specific department questions are based on internal comparisons. When our firm was evaluating the positions, we are looking at the classification from a county council perspective, looking at all positions across all county departments, and not cherry picking and just selectively comparing to specific jobs. So moving into the specific questions. Number one, the weights and measures. The question was, did WIS only consider weights and measures classification of inspector in the salary comparison? Did the study include considerations such as county population, number of inspectors, directors, et cetera? The external salary data that was conducted was using, as mentioned in the report, benchmark positions for the PAC category, meaning that the position was compared to other similar positions with similar job functions. So yes, the Monroe County's position was compared to other similar positions with those functions. The external salary data provided in the job category was a culmination of all the PAC external benchmark data, and it was not a direct job match to each individual position in the PAC category. Similar-sized counties were included in the study, but that data was not segregated by Similar sized counties were included in the study, but that data was not segregated by number of inspectors or directors. This type of comparison is something more along the lines of an operations or a staffing study, and that was not part of the job classification and compensation study. The highway department. We received several questions from this department. And before we move into those, we just wanted to thank Lisa, spent a lot of time with our firm and especially Allison, going back and forth, answering questions, very helpful throughout the whole process. So we just wanted to thank Lisa for all her help along the way. The first question is regarding the union employees have a negotiated pay scale, and that classification reflects possible promotions within the union. So going from highway one, you would promote to highway two. Highway one is a truck driver, highway two is a light equipment operator, and highway three is equipment operator, heavy equipment operator. So the comment is that the study has taken those positions out of promotional order and not summed them together. Example is that the sign repair person is listed as an LTC A with a midpoint salary of forty-one, two, forty-one thousand, two seventy-nine. Truck driver is listed as LTC B, midpoint of forty-four, six. And then it says that in the current grid, the light equipment operator is a step above in classification. And on a daily basis, the sign repair person can be assigned to do duties of a truck driver if assigned. So a lower grade would not, would create issues. The highway union positions were independently evaluated for inclusion in the FES job classification system. Under the current union pay scale, there are no defined classification levels or factor points assigned to the county highway positions to determine job placement or pay rates. This makes it nearly impossible to determine or defend the compensation of those positions. Therefore, we classified the union highway positions by point factoring the job descriptions using the factor guide charts for the LTC category. Light factored positions are classified together under the FES system. The truck driver and the light equipment operator positions point factored closely together, and thus resulted in both positions being classified at the same level. Based on our review of the sign repair position, the position did not possess the same functions as the, as the truck driver position. The job description for the sign repair position did not state that the position performs duties of a truck driver on a daily basis. The next question, the union contract is a five-year contract and does not expire until the end of 2024. How do you separate out just the highway personnel when the categories for many other departments? Since the highway contract doesn't expire until 2024, the current union pay grid would remain in place. The union highway positions would be removed from the LTC category and the pay plans. The non-union LTC positions would follow the LTC pay grids adopted by the county council. The study provides, this study provided county council with up-to-date salary information to use in any contract negotiations and to establish internal pay equity among other light classified LTC positions across all county departments. Number, the next question for the highway. The classification levels that we currently have were negotiated and agreed upon with the union. The positions should be brought more online with the external salaries that have been presented, and we support that action. The LTC grid separates the salaries too broadly among the union positions. In the current union grid, the lowest pay, lowest base pay of nineteen dollars and fifty-nine cents an hour is only a dollar eight difference in the highest pay of twenty dollars and sixty-seven cents an hour. So our response, we were asked by the county to classify all the union positions. The LTC pay plans that we presented show the council another option for classifying those highway union positions. The option groups all LTC positions countywide together to establish internal pay equity. The LTC pay grids were developed using current external salary data and are designed to address recruitment and retention issues. The highway pay grids do not accurately reflect the, the current external market. In our view, the existing union highway grids provide little incentive for employees to move to other positions internally within the department and take on that added responsibility and job duties of the higher classified positions. On the current highway grid, there is only a 1.4% increase in salary for employees going from highway one to highway two. A 3.1% increase for positions going from highway two to highway three, and less than a 1% increase for positions going from highway three to highway four. Another concern with the current highway pay grids is the percent differential from higher end to year forty-five on their step grid. On the current grid for a truck driver, if the grid were to remain the same, the position would only receive a 12% increase in their salary over the span of forty-five years. On our proposed grid, if the grid didn't change, a truck driver would receive a 26.67% increase in pay in 25 years. So comparing both grids as of now, and if they weren't to change, that same truck driver would be working twice as long to receive half the percent increase in pay in comparing those grids. The last question for the highway department. Were the snowplow duty pay, mechanics tool, and clothing allowances considered in the study? And how it compares externally? No, that was not part of the study. The study included the base salaries. The next department.
Allison, I am very sorry, and I, I should have accounted for this. I wasn't anticipating that we would devote as much time to the, to this agenda item tonight, but I should have realized that because this is important stuff. And I know we've got employees listening, and we've got department heads listening, and they want answers to these questions. But I do know also that we have presenters later in the agenda that are on a, have a tight timeframe as well too, and need to have some other family obligations that they need to get to. So I, I think if everyone's okay, you know, if we need to schedule another one of these, we, we can certainly talk about doing that. But I would like to get, you know, at the very least, get a, a written record of these responses to the questions out to our department heads and elected officials as soon as possible because these are important questions that needed to be answered and put out there. But we do have, unfortunately, we've only got limited time this evening. And I don't, I want to make sure that we can get everybody that needs to present tonight before, and we don't lose anybody. I apologize. Would that work for everybody? Are there any objections to that? Okay, so I'm going to ask our council staff to get in touch with our WIS representatives to get that information so that we can get it out tomorrow to our department heads and other elected offices on the questions that they had. And then we'll also be in touch if we want to, you know, get another one of these for another upcoming meeting. Because I, I know this is a huge endeavor, lots of questions that, that need to be answered for sure. I think this is what we, we've got to do this for now, and we'll just kind of go from here. Does that work for everybody? Okay. Okay, very good. Well, I'm, yes, again, sorry to cut it short. We will be in touch and we'll get, we'll get all the information out to our department heads tomorrow.
All right. Thanks for having us.
Okay, up next is, and again, thanks everybody for bearing with us. Up next is, where did I know even have my agenda in front of me?
Next up, Mr. President, we've got Community Voices for Health, item five.
And this is, we're going to be joined by Liz Grenette. We'll have an update from Ms. Grenette, who is the Executive Director of the Community Justice and Medications Center, what we call CJAM, Mediation Center.
Sorry about that. Couldn't figure out how to unmute my camera. So anyway, thanks everybody for allowing us to come and share a little bit of information and some updates about our Community Voices for Health project. And I'm going to try to go through these slides really quickly. But the main reason that I'm here is really to invite your, for those of you already that know about the project, more participation in what it is that we're doing. And, and those of you that don't know a lot about and haven't been involved yet, to really encourage you to, to, to join with us at some level in working on this initiative. In the, the, in March of 2020, CJAM, along with the Bloomington Health Foundation, who acts as our fiscal sponsor, were, were awarded a grant by the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation with the goal to really just figure out ways and encourage communities to develop ways to strengthen engagement and participation of those folks that often are not at the table when policy decisions around health are being made. And at the time that they announced this grant, you know, COVID-19 was nowhere in, you know, anybody's vision of what was going to happen. And so COVID has only ended up exacerbating and shedding real light on those inequities that exist in our community and communities across the country. So part of what they, we're one of six pilots across the country. We have this great opportunity when we, and part of what they wanted to encourage local communities to think about is so often this three minutes at the microphone, which is a way to, to get feedback from the community, is not deliberative, it's not sufficient to identify community needs. And oftentimes, it's not very effective in influencing policymaking. And the other piece that we've been hearing from folks over the last year and a half that we've been working on this project is that so often, you know, whose voices are not typically represented? And oftentimes, those voices that do come to the microphone are people that are often at the microphone and may have very specific ideas about what they want to promote. So let me kind of just quickly tell you what we've been doing over the last year and a half. So we have spent a lot of time, of course, part of the original goal of the grant was to meet people where they are, to take time to build trust, to do outreach, so that we really could ensure equitable engagement and involvement of underrepresented folks in our community on this project. And of course, again, challenges in not being able to meet people where they are, but there also have been some really great opportunities. And so for the first six months of the project, we did a lot of background research. We did in what's engagement scans and kind of looked at the way decision-making is happening around the community in terms of how voice is being included, and we have information to share. We also did over 70 interviews with various people, and we sort of used a popcorn approach. So we'd say, okay, let's meet with this person, talk to us about the concerns and, and what you're seeing in the community, and tell us some other folks that we should talk through. So through this process, over this six to seven month process, we identified and formed an advisory council. We have 30 members that include citizens of various self-identified, underrepresented communities, members of social service and advocacy groups, elected officials, nonprofit community leaders. And we really see this group as sort of being the bridge between what's happening at the policy and decision-making levels here in our community. So that does include, we've defined decision-makers pretty broadly. So it's elected officials, like you all here tonight, and then also those people that have control and influence over how resources are allocated. So as we sort of worked on this, then we started working with, to form with our advisory council. We train community volunteers to become facilitators and also note takers for these small group discussions. We also use the advisory council to sort of pilot what it is that we were, you know, what we wanted to share with folks. And then we began working with, of hosting these small group discussions between October and June of this last summer. We, one of the strategies to ensure that we were really reaching, and this is the work that it really takes to get people to the table, was that we worked with our advisor council and other allies. We worked with the Monroe County Health Department with Penny and Carol Weiss Kennedy from IU Health around and helped to facilitate some of their community needs assessment sessions. And then we really, really worked with our stakeholders to hold sessions for different underrepresented groups. And we identified about 12 groups within the community that we wanted to hear impact from or input from. And we had mixed success. We did better with some groups and others. The other piece that we did in, in doing these sessions was we really wanted to understand what were the unique needs of those stakeholder groups and adapt our processes and how we were, what, what was happening in those sessions to the unique needs of those folks. We also did demographic, over 160 residents participated. We did demographic pre and post surveys, give you a couple of just data points. Ninety-eight percent of those that participated felt their opinions and experiences were heard. Ninety-four percent indicated they learned about other participant views. Ninety percent that said that they would participate again. And here's one particular quote that I, I thought stood out to me. "I felt like our opinions and information were accepted and respected. This was really worthwhile, need to have this more often and in more communities." So at, at this summer, we spent again with our advisory council, some of our advisory council members and our project team really looking at, okay, what did all of these 160 residents, you know? Oh, the thing that I, I left out is that we really approached this work really broadly. So we didn't define what the issues were and ask for people to give input. We said, what's important to you about health to you and your family? And then what do you want decision-makers to know? And so out of that, we analyzed, you know, hundreds of comments from all of the participants and then worked to kind of theme that three areas that sort of emerged that while each of the different stakeholder groups might have had different experiences of these themes, they, there were these similar themes that, that people identified, which were health insurance, the importance and concerns around access affordability, health services around the availability and quality, and then healthy community, which kind of more broadly addressed issues, the social determinants of health, like safe and affordable housing, transportation, healthy food, barriers to accessing services, those types of issues and themes. So we have created a deliberation guide. And now we're getting ready to launch and take that information from all of these participants to launch into public dialogue and deliberative sessions that will include past participants and then anyone in the community that's interested in learning more and wanting to experience and share their information and learn. And we're also then really hoping that we will get good turnout by decision-makers, especially our elected officials like yourselves tonight. And at those sessions, just so that, you know, ever, all the participants, again, will do demographic surveys so we can look at, are we doing a good job of bringing the people in that aren't at the table? And then we're going to get people to talk about the themes that we've identified and then really begin to ask them, not only share what's important when they look at the themes, but what's important to listen to, what's important to others, and then consider possible ways to address. And then consider possible ways to address these issues and really focusing on what would it take, what are the trade-offs, and what are possible steps for action? And so it's not about trying to prove a point or seeing assumptions as fact. It's really about grappling with these issues and thinking and identifying maybe ways we can move forward as a community. I do want to say that these, just a, just to highlight city of Pittsburgh, these are some pictures of, of their deliberative forums. They've been using a process similar to what we're kind of going to be sharing in their community to make important decisions for, since 2015. And, excuse me. So after we get finished with these sessions over this fall, we'll be compiling the information. And then specifically, we're going to come back to all of you to see if you're willing to come and meet with us to review all this information that we've been sharing with you and really talk a little bit more about other best practices, examples from other communities, address legal barriers to enhanced engagement, and really look at some institutional frameworks that you might want to consider for embedding a more robust, equitable way to think about making decisions. And then the last slide is, we have some sessions coming up. And this is the link to Eventbrite to register. This Sunday from three to five, we have a few more spots for in-person sessions at Monroe County Public Library. Everyone will be wearing masks and sitting a little bit, you know, socially distanced in circles. And then we have three Zoom sessions scheduled. The 14th is almost full, so we've added, just this afternoon, we added a second session. At this point, we'll be adding more as we move forward, but the time, and I wondered if, 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 just to get some feedback from any of you, we're looking at possibly doing a day session from one to three, three to five, or six to eight. And so I don't know for any of you that might be interested, do you have a, a preference on whether it was a day meeting or an early evening meeting? Anyone?
I mean, for me, early evening is better, other, other than Tuesdays. I, I'm just, I'm pretty much maxed out on, on daytime meetings these days.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say exactly the same thing.
Me too, especially with kids getting out of school.
Yeah, okay, that sounds, thank you for that feedback. So we'll do another early evening session. And then I'm gonna stop my share, see if anybody has any specific questions. And then, I don't know, Trent or Kate, if either of you want to just say something about you. They're, Kate and Trent are sharing a position on the advisory council, so any feedback for the group?
Kate always says things better than me, so if she wants to go first, she should.
That's ridiculous. I think that you're, you're being generous in saying we're sharing a position because I think we're, we're taking up two spots fully because we're both really interested. And if I can speak for both of us, I enthusiastic about this work. It's timely, it's important, and it's being done in such a purposeful and thorough way. It's, it's really, and I've spoken about it before, it's just, it's an incredible process to be a part of. So I encourage everybody to, if they can possibly attend one of these sessions, it, it's really, it, it promises to be very informative and enlightening. And it's, it's really a joy to be a part of. So I just strongly recommend if you can work it into your schedule to participate.
And the only thing I would add to that is the, it's, CGM does such a remarkable job conducting these meetings where voices of the people we represent in this county, border to border, where their, their healthcare concerns, their thoughts, their experiences come out in an incredible way. And it's amazing the things that you see from people that have very different experiences and backgrounds and factors and, and things. And it is, it, it's, it's an amazing story of the people that we represent. So please come out and, and do this. I believe I'm there on Sunday, and I'm looking forward to it very much, Liz.
Questions and?
Yeah, let's, let's see if there's any questions or comments, Mr. Iverson, yes.
Yeah, the, the link that was shared in the chat to the, the document on the data is really good. I'm, I don't mean to sound surprised, of course, it's good. But particularly the responses on pages three and four are, are really great feedback, I think, for, for those of us. So thank you for sharing that, and I look forward to participating in the future.
Good. Thank you so much for your time. And actually, I loved this experience of why I've actually never observed a work group. And so I want to thank you for all the work and diligence and, and thought that you, I don't even know how many hours all of you are working all the time to do this. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. Appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Thank you for joining us and, and we'll be keeping in touch. Thanks.